That was just some of the, like I said, our contacts at DOE. So we talked about, we also would like to go back and revisit the, you know, we talked about possibly investing Georgia Fund One. I was hoping to get someone, some more information, but that's when the virus hit. So, but that's all I have. If there was any questions about maybe what we've discussed or anything to talk about.
Seth, I'd like to piggyback on you there for a minute, maybe a little bit more specifically from Stoller's question. Again, you know, no doubt this is an assessment point. You know, one thing is financially, we're pretty damn sorry. We just come, you know, we all knew that eventually, you know, the economy goes up and down. We knew eventually that recession would come. I don't think anybody saw a pandemic coming. So obviously it's come a little quicker than we thought. But, you know, we didn't get caught with our pants nailed though, so we're in good shape. A lot of districts, again, in my conversations every week with our RISA superintendents, we're just about the only district in RISA that already having conversations about curbing and cutting positions. I don't see a need for us to do that. What we have done, and we were practicing this anyway, for the last two years. You know, anytime we had somebody leave, we've taken a hard look at that position to see, is that something we really truly need? And, you know, we've shut down a lot of positions over the years. You know, my philosophy has always been, you know, you just don't call someone in and tell them they don't have a job. You do it through attrition. You know, that's the humane way to do it. You know, when they come and tell you that they're leaving, then that's, in my opinion, that's when you look at, okay, we still need this position. So we continue to do that. We have not, we came into this budget cycle already having conversations even before COVID hit about not adding any new positions. We don't, in my opinion, and I want to speak for Seth, but in my opinion, now's not the time to be having those conversations about creating new positions, doing this or doing that, you know, having all these grand ideas. The good news is our FTE, which our funding is based on our FTE. Our FTEs are already set. It was set before the pandemic hit. Our final FTE camp took place in early March. So those, our FY21 state funding outside, ignoring the 14% cut, is already set. All right? So it doesn't matter if, short term, it will not impact us until come August. And we don't know what parents are going to do. All right? I'm thankful that I'm not in that position anymore where I have to make that decision come August. You know, the, do you put your kid back into school and, you know, all this social distancing and stuff they're talking about. CDC put the guy in line to out of schools. You know, the six foot distance and everything. Well, no way the CDC's ever worked in a school. You tell a five year old to stay six feet away, they gonna look at you like you're crazy. They're like, you ain't got five, hey, I'm six feet, I don't matter to you. You know? They don't know what that, it's impossible. So there's going to be parents, like obviously and understandably, who won't be apprehensive. Are they going to send their kids back? I don't know. One thing we talked about and we're going to prepare to do is, you know, we gotta have a cyber option for those kids. We can't just say, you know, Seth calls up and says at school, you know, I don't feel comfortable with my kid back in the classroom right now. You know, Tiff County is offering a cyber option, so I'm just going to enroll them over there and they're going to work from home. There goes dollars to Tiff County and out of our pie. We can't sit by and let that happen to us. So we're going to have to have, and we will have a plan to work with parents like that. Saying all that to say, who shows up in August and who's still with us next March determines FY22 funding? And that's when it'll come out in the launch. Okay? So we're okay with FTE now regardless. I mean, that shit sailed before all this hit. So really now, all we gotta deal with is that 14% cut or more that the government's, it's going to throw at us. But with our balance and everything, I think we're pretty rock solid. We can handle that. Seth and I've had a lot of conversations and I think we're both very confident that FY20 is really not a concern. FY21. FY21 is not a concern. It's FY22 and beyond. It's year two and three of the aftermath of this that none of us know about. We don't know, you know, we're sitting here saying, you know, about our tax revenue and all, we don't know. You know, that's going to be a while down the road before we know those answers. So, you know, I just want the board to understand, you know, that there's no need to hit a panic button for FY21. I really don't think there's going to be a whole lot of tough decisions in FY21. Now, 22 and 23, that may change. That might be where you have to make some pretty tough decisions. I don't know.
One thing, what I would jump in and say is, if we're looking at $3 million reduction in funding for next year, we will get, we will get the CARES Act. We will have this $300,000 decrease in dearest. We've already found probably three hundred, somewhere between three, four hundred thousand dollars in our operating budget that we can drain. Some of that is purchases that we had here and one time purchases, we won't have those next year. Question is, is wouldn't we want to commit in the budget for that? How much, like I said, we did plan to put 750 each year set aside for capital projects. If we lower that amount, you eventually get to a point where $3 million is not that bad. For us, if we get, we can get it down to where we're only looking at a half a million to a million dollars. That's for FY21. FY22, we don't have.
That's the, that's the whole thing.
So there, again, in my professional opinion, I think two things are there. Anytime you have attrition, take a hard look at needing that position. And two, I just don't think these are the times where we even have a conversation about adding two things to your payroll. You don't have to. We've talked about this and again, I think we're okay with this in the budget for FY21. Have talked about meeting that need of cyber learning for kids that are not comfortable coming back. You know, obviously what we learned, like that young school district has learned is, you know, we're nowhere near ready for distance learning as a, as a main ship. You know, it's no one's fault. I mean, that's anybody, anybody can say. One thing here is like Moore County, like a lot of our Southwest Georgia areas, this has nothing to do with us. Our state local federal governments got to figure out a way to get internet to them, but it's sort of hard to have distance learning. I don't know, so y'all live in areas where you have to go climb a tall tree to get a cell phone signal. We can't control that, but I mean, that is part of the challenge here. So one of the things we've talked about there is, you know, and Justin's already working on it. We're going to have to invest some funds into, you know, funds if it's allowable or CARE Act funds or to general budget funds, you know, we'll have to invest some in more mobile hotspots and those type of things. If we can get it through exams, necessary. We're also going to have, again, this is not unique to Moore County. We're going to have staff that ain't going to feel comfortable coming back. Some of them are going to be legit. Some folks got underlying health conditions, you know, that may scare the death of coming back initially. This is a total of questions, I don't have an answer for them yet. We should have discussed this. I don't know if any superintendent has an answer for it yet and discusses ahead. What's going to be our plan to work with those type of people? We're going to, you know, have a couple that, you know, bringing back this week, we're starting to show, we bring back some folks. Phase one, you know, but I've had, you know, I've had a couple contacts because of underlying health concerns. They're not comfortable. I'm a patient person, but at some point, I don't know the answer. At what point do you finally tell somebody that you've got to come back or you've got to come home? I don't know. Again, that's probably a common question. But we're going to have those issues and some of them are going to be legit. We're going to have issues where.
They know they don't get invited, they don't want to come back.
You got that?
I'm scared I'm going to catch a bad goat.
That's what I was going to say, what happens? You're going to have people, everybody's got low levels of paranoia about this. And you're exactly right, I can see there's going to be people, someone sneezes. They're going to be running for the door. They're going to be running to the parking lot, getting the car and going home, you know? That's something, you know, you gotta think about it and the board is probably going to have to, you know, chime in on that at some point too. But again, I would recommend that we have our attorneys on those conversations. Because they have modified so many, FMLA and all that since all the pandemic started. Way I understand it, best I can, and it was like the fourth movement and that stuff now. So that's pretty much, I just want to follow up on those, those few points here. Seth, I think Seth did that job laying it out. FY21, I think we're good there. We've done some pretty solid things in the next two years if we don't know about that. We all know what's going to come down the pipe. There Seth, I'm going to let you, I'll take it back up here again. That's going to lead us up to the track project. I know this is probably in the favorite conversation, but I think we can be negligent if there's a group, we need to start having conversations right back to what Seth, face the $3 million budget, right? We haven't got the course back yet. We're biz, obviously, we haven't got the biz back, but we're pretty much know based on what Travis has told us. You know, we're looking at the, at $2 million. Y'all have, not only be, y'all got a political part of this as well. You know, and of course, you know, as a whole, as a district, we got a perception problem there. You know, we're getting cut $3 million. The saving grace is, like I said, I don't see us cutting employees right now. If we had to do that, then I would definitely say, you know, wow, pretty bold even go out there and cut the employees and build a $2 million project, whatever the profit may be. But anyway, I think the board, you know, we need to have discussions on, you know, where do we go from here? You know, with, and it may be too early to make that call as a board, you know? Like I told Travis last conversation, I had a few weeks' lead, but you know, I would honestly, I would recommend the board taking any action until they got actual, you know, firm dollar amounts in on, you know? But anyway, I just wanted to open that up for some discussion and.
Would you have any ideas? No one?
Well, I think we'll know, my understanding, you know, they got, you know, like you said, by law, they got to pass that budget by June 30. So June 30, we'll at least should have confirmation on what the additional cut is, correct Seth? We'll know that it's, that's why I'm saying the donor can't come back six months from now. And like I said, it would be here just in, it cuts you another 4% or something.
But whether or not 14% is the new norm for FY22.
Yeah, that, yeah.
They could, they could raise the money back or they could.
And that's what I'm saying, they don't need to sign, they want to.
But all that's going to be depending on what the federal government gives each state. Let's be honest. He's staying planned on 14%. All of them's gone back with the second and third iteration of the CARES Act or whatever we're going to call it. It could be 10%, it could be 30%. We don't know, we won't know until June. You get the million dollars back in the school, we just talked about that. We get 1.08 from the CARES Act, we just talked about that. We just talked about $600,000. That's money that we knew, well, the million we knew was going to get back because we paid for that. I think everybody in this room knows how I've been. I've made no bail. I think we're doing a disservice to all our young people at the high school because we don't have a track. It not only would help us physically, because I see people playing on their tennis court who are not in the high school. I think that would give our teachers, our students and everybody a facility to at least work on their physical fitness, to be more healthy going forward. It would help our PE department, not just because we got a track to run, and people say, we're going to run track on track. Where does our PE people go outside and do anything at? You know, we spend a lot of time inside and air conditioned. When in fact, if we get outside a little more often and deal with the climate that all of us live in here, we would be a lot more healthy. We would have a facility that would control our kids, they'd come out of the back of the gym, the track's right there. They'd be able to go out and run, they'd be able to go out and walk, and it would be a benefit to our community. We've said that, or some of us have said this 100 times, it would be great if the city encountered. I know with the new city manager that that may be a possibility. And Bill, you're absolutely right. There's a political gain or loss here. But I can pretty much think that in six months, we'll all know who politically gained and who lost. And I think if we put this on hold, and I'm not saying we vote Thursday night to build a track. I'm saying we need to find out what it's going to cost us to build this track. And oh, by the way, we know we're going to build that building. Or are we going to have porta potties back out there again next year for tennis? Because we all remember the backlash we had on that, like we should build a building in three weeks and they should have bathrooms out there for boys at earth. We're going to build that building. Somebody's going to build that building. And that's going to be over $100,000, we know that. But I don't, and I know there's folks here in this room disagree with me on this, and I don't know how to follow that. Because we walk out of here, I'm going to vote my conscience on it. My conscience is that we need to make sure that we provide an opportunity for all our children in high school or middle school, so we can bring them over and make it to that level. That's just my opinion. That probably means the election is over.
I just want things there that we really need to start talking about. It's going to happen to be a decision. And I do agree, like I said, I think it's pretty mature to make a decision prior to bid prices coming in. You know, but the thing to be, you know, long term, and Seth could talk more about it is, again, don't necessarily look at where we are right now financially. It's where will we be 12 months from now and 24 months from now financially? Because that reserve is all we got, you know, because of the high school payments, it's all we got. The middle school, right now, needs a lot of work. I mean, Jimmy and I talk about it almost weekly. We said, we could probably go over there right now and put anywhere between a half billion, a million dollars in middle school. Probably still not getting it done that, that needs to be done. You know, all that, like I said, all, you know, those things are going to have to come out of the district pocket up until 2042 or whenever that high school finally gets paid off. You know, so for the most part, you know, two years from now, you'll start earning, you know, some state money again. But it takes a while for that to build up too. That first year, you won't earn enough money to change that lifeboat, probably. But, so it's just, it's going to take, and you go back. The thing I found confused, not confusion, but frustrated during this whole thing is, and I think Mr. Beard and I, I've said this to him before, you know, it's frustrating because, you know, I like, I personally like to look at things, figure out the issue, come up with a solution and fix it. Ain't that easy to do and all that mess? Because everything's changing on a daily basis. You know, Mr. Bacon answered earlier, when we opened school, well, as of tonight, the plan is always served. Now, you asking that question next week, it might be a different answer depending on what changes. I don't know, you know?
To go along with that, we're all planning on the economy being like it is for the next two years, the next three years.
Yeah, you don't know, you don't have a crystal.
We don't know. As good as Seth's been with the finance, Seth can't tell me today what our economy will be a year from now. We don't know what people's going to go out and spend and what they're going to buy and invest in.
We're going to buy a new transmission.
We have to stop by and see what I got. But it's just crazy and for us to not keep trying and you guys have done a great job with this. I'm not saying you have. I'm just saying that we can all fall back into the house and not do anything. Or we can say, okay, we're not letting this stop us from doing what's best for our students. I'd be surprised when they tell you, we're not going to build a new track. We need to do away with the track program. And how many kids does that affect? Because where do they run? What do they go to? You know, and everybody can say, well, they run down there at Mill Miller Field for the last 50 years. Well, I wouldn't go run down there, especially if I'm doing hurdles on asphalt track. And all those things you pointed out, you're absolutely right. Some of these things are going to have to be done. Tracks will have to be done. One day, the fill house has to be done. I don't know so much about the baseball and softball complex. There's things that have to be, or would be nice to be done down there. But I think you've done a lot of it this year already, put defense nut on some of it and secured all that. And I agree that we ought to have a plan, putting buses, we can't go another 10 years without buying a bus. And then all of a sudden, how many you got to buy, 30 in a year? Can't ever do that again. That's just, that was bad management. But.
Well, I'm not going to say I am, I'm not going to say I'm not going to commit fully to the track. We'll get some numbers in. It may be something we have to do in phase. Maybe build a, build it this year and track next year or something like that will receive. Then we get some numbers. I don't know what's going to happen the next six weeks.
That's right. I'll look for a step by here. I don't know what's going to happen next six weeks. It's crazy time, it really is.
But you can stick your head in the sand and whatever happens five years when you pull your head out, you go, oh, we should have done this because things got better, or, oh, we shouldn't have done that because things got worse. It's a gamble. Five years from now, the high school, we all have 130 kids in. No, we're dead.
All right, right. Anything else?
About the summer program. The decision was made because of the virus and not knowing where we would be right now. Ms. Thomas went ahead and started the meals to youth program. So everyone that signed up will get a meal in the mail every week until June 30 through June 30.
Maybe it was wait. Run that by me one more time.
I'm giving out boxes. She applies for some program that.
Who's giving?
Maybe it was, because I forgot about that, but the, it's, it's another government. But she applies, she got accepted soon, and then she reached out, I think she had, what'd she say? 60? I think she said 60 kids, families, signed up for the program. So every week, they have boxes of food delivered to their house. A week's worth.
But was there a number on how many we could have, or is we just reached six?
No, I figure that's the only ones that signed up for it.
But we couldn't reach it, but they had no connection.
We immediately contacted, contacted them all, I'll check with them on that. But that runs through June 30.
Yeah, and then that'll stop.
And that'll stop. Which I'm assuming that's what the summer lunch program only runs through June 30 too.
Was it? I thought it would go into July.
I don't know.
Right before school starts back.
I don't know.
I don't know what happened any week. Over by her, ask the dealer to sign up or?
Sure would.
Can you, can you? Don't worry. Find out about it.
Will do. All right, well, we, this is chair. That's all we have as far as the report goes. Unless there's something, you know, there is a personal action summary in your packet? There's something there you want to discuss or need to discuss?
I mean, take one of the, drive one.
I was, I drove to the location, it was about, I'd be shopping, it was 100. Things.
Let me ask you, I'm glad you brought this up, this problem. You know, because our, our rough plan, like everybody else's rough plan, you know, do the virtual graduation. Then depending on how things shake out, before school loans, you know, do a traditional in-person one. What's the board's thought on an in-person one? Which would be July, sometime in July. You know, a traditional graduation, that's it. Now, the folks that say they're going to do it, they talk about again, all this social spacing. Look, I was born at night, it wasn't last night. You ain't going to get them folks up in those stands to do any social distancing. You're not going to do that. But anyway, that's what they say, so I mean, you know, what are your thoughts? I mean, I have thrown that out there to folks that that's a possibility.
Well, I heard somebody say the other day, the way their school's going to do it is they're going to have the parents and the child sit on the football.
Sit on the field?
And when that child's name is called, he would, he or she would come up, get her diploma or his diploma, and then go back and sit with their parents. But they would be spread out over the football field with social distancing.
Their football field must be bigger than ours.
Maybe, what you only talking about, 200 kids?
Well, one of the service academies graduated.
Air Force Academy did it, yeah. And then they spread them out throughout.
It'd be fine if you got 200 kids, mom and daddy, what you going to do? You got mom and daddy and grandpa and grandpa and uncle and aunt?
They limit it, they're limiting it to six tickets. Like, like we do if it's indoors at the.
How many are we going to have graduate?
About 200 maybe.
Yeah, and yeah, we have a trend too. So you figured 1200 people, and you scattered 1200 people around on that football field where they're not 15 feet each other?
5,000 square yards out there. What do you guess?
Chair, nothing numbers in there.
Again, we don't have the square yard. Yeah, I find it's 50, 50 yards wide, it's actually 53 yards wide, 100 yards long, not using the.
Divided into groups. Alphabetically, go halves alphabetically. One time and another day.
Like two sessions?
Here's the problem you're going to have, I've thought about this a lot, I really have. Here's the problem you don't have, I've thought about this a lot, I really have. If, if Russ Beard was graduating, I got my diploma already.
You didn't come back.
You called me and told me to come out there and sit on that hot field in July. I said, Mr. Sims, I love you like a brother, but I'm not coming and neither is my parents. Now, they will be some that will come. They, they will.
I want them to do the traditional.
And the kids already got their diploma from last year?
No, they'll get them Thursday, this Thursday.
Yeah, well?
We're handing them out this Thursday because the virtual graduation is Friday.
I would like to see us have a, a real graduation. But I, I just don't, once again, you're going to have, remember last year when we sat there and what no teachers in the seats? At what point you say, who's coming, who's not coming? But you don't have 100 chairs out there as empty because then it, it looks bad. And it looks bad then if only 30 or 40 want to show.
Well, like I said.
Teachers?
No, students.
I'm going to meet with, with Gina, kind of allowed the health department this weekend, allow. Just going to get her opinion on it. We got time, we got a little bit of time.
The shelter in place, like again, for late 30? Late 30 versus the governor's executive order expires.
All right, so if we held one in July, it would pretty much be up to the person to decide whether they want to go, knowing that they might have to sit close to somebody. Yeah, as long as there's no other local ordinances or anything out there. What about the cattle dams?
They, they all know.
I remember there was some discussion about them. Here's a mom of a graduation.
I didn't see her yesterday when I drove by. Sorry.
No, mine, he's on black. Ms. Thomas obviously is watching. She said there's 100 families signed up. Families cannot be added after the enrollment period ends. They put the information out through the social platform and on the website.
You're talking about the virtual or are you talking about?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, Ms. Thomas.
Oh, you're talking about the field.
So out of 3,000 kids, we got, and our school's just a little over 3,000. We got 100 people signed up. That's about 3%.
All students, what did you say?
She said the social media, social platform and the website.
If we don't do anything else, if we don't do anything else, and I'm building, I want to be with you on this. We got to figure out somehow this connectivity thing. You can't tell me that if we sent this out and everybody's seen it on the computer or everybody's seen it on the telephone, and I know Ms. Thomas does a good job. You can't tell me we only got 100 kids in this county who would like that. 100 families, not 100 kids, 100 families, that's, that's all we reached.
The problem is, is the ones that need it are the ones that don't have the connectivity.
That's why I'm saying, we got to fix it. Whether it's, and, and all of us in this room know that we had a gentleman come in here and they got a grant to outfit five buses and spread them out through their county. Now, five buses would work for us because our county is so much bigger than theirs. And they had hotspots and wifi connectivity in those buses. And they located them throughout the county.
We've got one of those under development. We plan on having that up and running by the end of the year.
But one ain't going to do you no good. It's, it's a step forward, I got that. But here, here was a small county who found a grant to do it. I don't know where they got the grant or whatever. But I'm telling you, if, if we don't do anything else, whether it's the state government, whether it's the federal government, has to fix this and rule America. You know, we don't have laptops, we don't have, have connectivity. That's, that's what we've said all along. I think when we look at number one issue, that should be number one with a bullet beside, we're going to fix it.
Now, one thing, we've got, and now Justin may disagree with you. We've got devices. The problem's the connectivity.
Yeah.
You know, we've got the devices. For one, you know, not every kid, not all 3,250 kids needs a ProBook. Some, some of them have it. So we got enough devices to get the kids. It's the connectivity that is. Now, what Justin has worked on, and he's going to hopefully have it up and running soon. One thing he's done is, and he can explain it to you, but basically he's purchased a, well, go ahead, Justin.
Are you talking about outdoor wifi?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll just have an internet on the outside of the building so people can do drive-throughs. Again, that's not the absolute greatest, but it's something. And the buses, so apparently government, Governor Kim just sent out some wifi rangers too. And he sent them to, somehow Camden County got one and Liberty County, but not Worth County. So I don't know how they pick this stuff. But we're one of the, I think, third largest land in Georgia. So we got a lot of, a lot of issues that plague us with the development of internet and infrastructure.
Well, if we can't get kids to come and pick up food in town that was free, how are we going to get somebody to come and sit outside the high school or middle school or elementary so they use wifi? That's, that's.
And maybe, again, it's not going to be 100% solution. Neither, um, there's some surrounding districts who did have that capability off the ground. They did have a pretty good use of it. The kids that, and I've had some conversations with some folks, you know, you're type A kids, you know, take their school seriously and everything, they're the ones that found a way to get to connective. They, I don't know how many, you know, some of them, they got it done, right? They're the type of kid that would come, sit outside the pork and lot. Again, it's not a 100% solution, but.
But they could have went inside, outside the library, not even use their wifi. That's how I'm on that committee, just talking about.
See, I didn't, see, I didn't even know that.
I didn't know that. And there's some part about it, like, Birk County.
But I'm, I'm telling you.
We had some go to McDonald's, I know one parent.
You live in Warwick. Or you live in Bridgeboro, you're not driving to Worth County High School just to have wifi. The average kid won't because one, we provide transportation for most of them to come there.
Like I said, I mean.
Some of them don't have the capability of getting here.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
It's a complex issue, it's not, that's what, Justin, I've had that conversation. There's not one thing that's going to fix the whole thing.
And when we talk about these areas like Warwick and Bridgeboro, we really got to examine and really go into those areas and deep dive with maybe even a Verizon. Because if that doesn't work, the hotspots won't work, the buses are useless, right? So if you put a bus out where data's not there, it's not a magic bus that gets internet. It, it's only if there's a tower within range. So we'd really have to scope out where are the best spots in those areas? Because I know some people say, I go out to Bridgeboro, I lose it all over. I'm like, well, we'd have to hit that sweet spot.
You're a total liar, can't even, total old man, can't even vote.
Yep, and Verizon partnered with this county to help with this.
Is there any funding from the state we could pass in through, like maybe we wanted to private company and pass in the Bridgeboro, just say, we furnish unlimited internet.
I, I hope, I hope that's coming because these wifi rangers are sending out are just a temporary fix. I mean, once they go away, they're done, right? So I hope they're looking into that, I mean, that's a step forward.
Supposedly the EMCs are, are doing that, trying to get, trying to get connectivity, which is the craziest thing in the world for me. And I had an appointment.
That, Mr. Chair, I gave you his, Public Library's request for y'all to vote Mr. Beard to continue on their, their library committee. I didn't think y'all would be that excited. His terms expiring, but it looks like they want him to stay on, so. We just spoke about one of Beard, about Jeff Banks. Yeah, just, just Mr. Beard, I think. Whatever you got, right now. That's it, unless, like I said, unless y'all have some conversations about the personnel actions that are pending and need to go into executive session, then that's all we got. We, we are, hopefully we're going to have our audit finished by sometime in July. We've been under all this, just our regular annual financial audit. They just finished one for, I think, January, but, because we were able to, going with the, the connectivity that we have in this room, we just can get the hotspots. We've been able to get all the information. We did it, we worked with the home, it's finished it all. They, they did work on that couple of months on, on the information. Hopefully we'll have that complete by July. Down there on number three, so you're going to move that over to the SS, but we're going to turn around in. Hire another one to take that place. Number three. There's a place for that, you're moving. Let me get you a definite answer on that from Mr. Turnbull by Thursday. If you, if you saw the rental, number three, ask your circle about. Number six, he's taking Frasier's place. Please don't take a comment to the reservation. That's number six down there under information, no transfer. On the recommendation, we're number four. Uh, move her one down and that's all the world will have got some of you. On the recommendation? Yeah. No, that's a.
No, I don't know what's, I don't know what's, information.
Oh, no, she's, she's on board with that.
She's on board with it?
Yeah, she's on board with that. She, she held that position once before and fast. Heard Ms. Evans pretty, pretty close and working wise. They're both on board with that.
Where is the principal's secretary going now? Don't he already have a secretary?
She's been, um. She's ESS worker.
So she won't have a job?
No, we transferred her to, um,
To the achievement center? Does Will not already have a secretary? No.
No, we redesigned the entrance over there. We put in that, we built everything for speed. Which one is that? She's not on there, we left her off, we got to go back. She's not, she's not. This, oh, that's why she's not on, she's ESS.
This is the number six down there on information. She a AP now?
I'm sorry?
Is she a AP now?
That's a HE.
It's HE, coaches. It's a HE.
You're a coach? I mean, is he an AP?
He's got, he's got a leadership degree, but he's not currently a.
We're over on APs. I come away and move one of them and just.
Well, I would see how, you know, if, if you cover AP position at the high school, that's going to lead you to, one of them is a CTA E director. Basically, that's going to lead you with one AP, principal. And I really think they would be overrun with handling discipline and all those type of things.
Have they got to come from the high school?
No, he's coming from the primary school. He's currently at the primary school.
I know, from where all the APs, the old school couldn't go in that person. And, because we said we all, we all.
Well, we got rid of, at the elementary and primary school both, I think we've got rid of APs that's up in here.
Didn't we add a guy last year to the elementary school in one way that we?
No, I think there was actually, we had one. Mr. Sims?
Well, I would then, instead of arguing this point or discussing this point, because we're not arguing, I'd like to know how many principals were authorized? FTE, QB, XY?
Principals or APs?
Both. I know we authorized four principals. And five if you count the achievement center.
Yeah, you got that, principal.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can get that for you.
Because we, at one time we had five to six over, or four or five over. Was it four? Okay, four over. And we were going to do this through attrition. When, when one left, we wasn't going, we, we had one leave last year when Mr. Curse come in. We, we hired a lady to go in. Now we have another assistant principals leaving. Why did Frasier leave?
Going back home, he's some criminal.
But is he going sideways? He's going assistant principal, assistant principal, or is he going?
Assistant, I don't think he's going to an AP position.
Did he already sign his contract?
Yes, I'm pretty sure. That was his whole thing, he wasn't going to resign until he got approved.
Yeah, so anyway, we're, we're back at that. We're, we're really not treading anybody, we're just promoting people into positions. And are we going to replace Mr. Sims as a PD teacher at the primary school or is?
Transferring Coach Parker there. I do realize there's still another session.
I thought we made both go into executive session.
Oh, we have to win. We're going. Do what?
We had all our discussion, but.
You want to, uh?
Leave back there.
I'm going to go into executive session. Yeah, you go into that decision. I was waiting for it for nine minutes. Y'all mind, so just mention it down there. You don't wipe the hands of it?
Got it off there, Capwell?